Good evening. In compliance with Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, I call to order a public hearing of the Board of Trustees of the Austin Independent School District for Thursday, August 15th at 6:05 PM. A quorum of the Board is physically present at the AISD Central Office to conduct this hearing. This hearing is streaming live on AISD TV and Apple TV. It's also being broadcast on cable, Channel 22 through Spectrum, Spectrum Austin Broadband, and on Channel 99 through AT&amp;T U-verse. Closed captioning in English is available on these platforms for individuals who are deaf or hard of hearing. Welcome and thank you for joining us. We have an opportunity to open, for the public to share public comments with the Board. This time allows speakers to comment publicly pertaining to the Austin ISD tax rate. Members of the public wishing to participate in the public hearing portion of our meeting called a dedicated AISD phone line in advance of the meeting to sign up to speak in person or to audio record their remarks. Tonight, we have one person who signed up to speak in person and two who left recorded messages. We'll start with the in-person testimony. Each speaker will be allotted one minute. No substitutions or yielding of time to others is permitted. Callers who signed up to speak in person are welcome to come to the microphone when their name is called. I see they're already present. As you come to the microphone, there's a device that will light up as you move through your one minute of allotted time. When the buzzer sounds, please make a final thought in one sentence. If you come to give compliment, to complain or to give complaint or praise, please reference a staff member by position or by abbreviated last name. We ask that all audience members, whether speaking or not, please show respect for all others at all times. Our in-person speaker for tonight is former Austin ISD trustee and state representative Gina Inahosa. And Ms. Inahosa, you may begin.
Thank you. I am Gina Inahosa, and I am an AISD parent, and I'm here to speak in support of a tax rate increase on the November ballot. My son did not get a teacher in fifth grade at Becker Elementary. My high schooler didn't get a science teacher at Austin High. These are examples of a larger problem in the state of Texas of teachers leaving the profession, but it's hitting us here at home. Last year, the state gave Texans a property tax cut, but it proves to be illusory because the state also starved our neighborhood public schools. This is not your fault. Governor Abbott and MAGA Republicans want to destroy our public schools. They call them government schools, and I'm asking you to fight back to defend and save our neighborhood public schools. I did not support or I did not endorse the last AISD bond. I did not endorse the Travis County bond. I did not endorse the city bond. This is different. This is your core function, paying teachers, and I'm happy to support our teachers this November. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now play the recorded messages for public testimony, so please listen carefully.
Hi, my name is Mindha Anderson, and I'm a librarian in the district. I'm also a homeowner in the city of Austin, and I am conflicted about the VADER. I don't want my taxes to increase. I don't think anyone wants their taxes to increase, especially on a teacher salary, single income, like that's hard for me. But I do understand we are in between a rock and a hard place because of the state funding. So I would hope that if the Board decides to put the vote to the public and the public votes for the VADER, that we would be able to use that funding to keep essential services in our district, like librarians at every campus, since we know our students succeed with librarians. We have higher graduation rates. We have higher literacy rates with our students when we have school librarians. And so since we are one of the things that Austin ISD values and continues to fund, I would hope that that's something that we could put that money to. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tara Bowman. I'm an Austin ISD parent. I have three kids in Austin ISD schools, and I am also the very proud librarian at Lamar Middle School. I was calling to encourage you guys to approve the voter-approved tax rate election because I understand that cuts will still come even if we do it, but I think a lot of folks are super aware that our schools are hurting because of recapture, Austin schools specifically. And this is probably going to be the only way that we can make, avoid making the cuts that we have even worse. So please, please do consider doing this, and thank you guys for your time.
This concludes public testimony. Trustees, are there any clarifying questions? Thank you, trustees. As a reminder to the public, please feel free to share any general comments or questions on non-voting items with the Board by email at trustees@austisd.org. Next, item 3.1 is a presentation on the Austin ISD voter approval tax rate election. Mr. Segura, will you please introduce the item?
Absolutely. Vice President Foster and members of the Board, I'd like to ask Dr. Jacob Reach, Chief Officer of Government Relations and Board Services, as well as Katrina Montgomery, Acting Chief Financial Officer, to join us and take us through the presentation. Team?
Superintendent Segura, Vice President Foster, Board of Trustees, thank you so much for your time tonight. And I also want to welcome, since I run the Zoom meeting as well, Trustee Singh, who just joined us on Zoom, and so she's along with us as well. So tonight, we want to share a quick presentation on our 2024 proposed tax rate. And so I want to start by taking us through a timeline because we've already done some actions and we have some important steps still coming up. So in June 20th, this Board approved a budget, and as part of that approval, our budget brought forward expenditures greater than what our tax rate would have brought in for us for that year. And that was kind of step one in bringing us to a discussion on potentially looking at a higher tax rate. Along with that process, we also worked with one of our partners, MoK Casey, to do an efficiency study, which is a requirement for any voter approval tax rate election. And then kind of that third part of this work, the district started in July on a realignment process looking at our long-term budget needs. So on July 25th, we got our certified appraisal rolls, and on August 5th, we got our preliminary maximum compressed rate, or as TEA refers to it, our MCR. And that is basically just what the tax rate would look like because of the tax rate compression that happens because of property value changes. So we conducted a series of voter community conversations, and I want to give a brief summary on that in just a moment. And still coming up, of course, we have this update in the presentation on the tax rate. We need to later adopt a tax rate and potentially call for VADER. And then we're going to continue those conversations with our joint, our ad hoc joint budget committee to continue to work through that long-term budget needs for the district. And we hope to bring more information back to the Board in September. And the last thing I want to highlight on our timeline is September 26th, we will have a presentation on our efficiency audit, and we will hold a hearing on that audit. And that'll be that last part of the requirements for a voter approval tax rate election. So at a public hearing, and like the one we have tonight, this is the opportunity to share the proposed tax rate for our Board of Trustees and our community. On August 19th, the Board may consider voting on the proposed tax rate, and we want to ensure that our Board and our public understands that is a requirement if your tax rate exceeds your previously approved rate, that there must be a recorded vote with at least 60% of the members voting in favor of the order, ordinance or resolution. So that's different than most of the votes that this Board will take. So you will require that 60% threshold of all nine of you, so at least six members. If adopted, the Board would then issue that order, and it would go for a voter approval tax rate election, or a VADER, and that's the term that the state uses, on November 5th. So I want to briefly mention what we did before this meeting. We held a series of community engagements with many of our trustees were able to take part in. They were well-attended, virtual Zoom meetings that we held on August 6th and 7th, and we provided a presentation similar to the one that we provided to the Board back on July 23rd, and also took feedback from the community on questions that they may have around the tax rate. Overall, you can kind of see a word cloud on our slide, and that just highlights the main things that we heard in those questions. So a lot of questions about tax and recapture was a big topic, but also about supporting the district and understanding how the state funding works, how the local funding works, and how those all play together. Now I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Montgomery.
Hello. Good afternoon. So today, we're going to talk about the average Austin home value. We've all seen this slide, and it shows, if you look in the middle of the box, it says FY 2324, the average home taxable value was $518,000. For FY 2425, the average home taxable value is $553,000. So we're going to walk through really quickly how you calculate that. So if the average home taxable value is $553,000, we have the homestead exemption, of which we would deduct the $100,000. So then that makes the average value $453,000. And then you see it says AISD's tax rate is by $100 value. So you would take that $453,000 and divide it by the $100, and then that times our current tax rate, the .8595, will give us the estimated taxes to Austin ISD, which is $3,898. So even if we don't do the voter, the voter increase or the tax increase, because the home taxable values increase, our, the rate will increase. So our taxable value, our tax rate will increase. So it'll go from $3,593 for the estimated taxes due AISD to $3,898. So that's a $305 increase. If you go to FY 2425, and if the, if you approve on Monday the voter tax increase, our tax rate would go from .8595 to .9505. So that would be an additional $412. So what we're estimating is that the average homeowner will see an additional increase at the value of the $553,000. They would see an additional $34 per month. So this is a slide we like to look at because it shows our tax rate history. If you look at 2015 to the far left through 2016, you can see our tax rate was at 1.2020. The dark blue that kind of looks like an ocean, this is our INS, which is at .1230. And then the light blue is our maintenance and operation. So if you go from 25 to 2016, with the exclusion of 2016, 2017, and 2018, all other years, the tax rate decreased. So on the far right, you see that the 2324 is the second column from the right, the 2324, the total, our tax rate is .8595. If we don't do anything to increase that, that would be the exact same rate. It would stay at .8595. If we do, if you vote on Monday to do the voter approval tax rate election, it will increase to .9505. The one thing we want to show on this slide is that the INS will stay consistent. What we're talking about on Monday to approve is only to impact the maintenance and operations. So the next slide shows us against our peers. How does Austin ISD compare to all the other local districts? So to the far left, it says, if this is our proposed, if we do the tax rate increase on Monday, the Board votes to approve that, we'll be at the .9505. Currently, in the second column, we're at .8595. So what this slide shows is currently, our tax rate is lower than any of the other tax rates in our, near, in our neighbor, in, of our neighbors. So then, if you look, we are lower than Eames, Round Rock, all the way over to Hayes CISD. If we increase, if you vote on Monday to increase the tax rate, we will still be lower than everything except for two ISDs. Eames and Round Rock would be the only two ISDs that are lower than us. All of the others, from Dell Valley over to CISD, we'd still be, have a lower tax rate. And that is the end of Dr. Reach and I's presentation. Do you have any questions?
Trustees, are there any questions? Trustee Boswell?
I have just one. Thank you both for the presentation and the information. The efficiency audits, I know you said, Dr. Reach, that we would see that September 26th, the public, there would be a hearing on that. Will the public see that before then? Will it be posted on the tax rate election website or anywhere else?
Yes, so we are tentatively scheduled to receive that next week, and pending any difference from that, we will provide that to our Board. We've also made a commitment to share to the extent that we can, because we'll still need to look through the audit and make sure what's public. We will provide it with the committee that we're working with, that ad hoc joint committee, helping us with our long-term budget. And then, once that is done, we will make it available publicly prior to that Board meeting. But it will obviously also be part of the Board meeting.
Thank you very much.
Vice President Foster, I apologize. I wanted to add one other piece of information for our Board and for our community, because it's going to differ from our norms slightly, and that's when this Board takes their tax rate vote to set that tax rate, typically, this Board actually takes two motions every time they set their tax rate. You take a motion on the MNO tax rate and INS tax rate, and then you take a motion to adopt an ordinance for historical exemptions for properties in the city of Austin. We typically always do that vote in September, and the city of Austin maintains the list of what properties are designated historical and eligible for that designation. That typically comes sometimes near the end of August, early September. So since we're not voting in September for our tax rate, we're voting earlier, that list is not yet ready. So what we're asking our Board to do next week is to only vote on the tax rate. We will then bring back the historical exemptions in September for vote from this Board of Trustees. So that's a little bit different than when we normally vote on them together.
Thank you, trustees.
Quick question. I'm sorry.
Absolutely. President Singh.
Hi, everyone. So I wanted to know if, Superintendent, if you could talk a little, just review for us, our bond rating and how that, you know, just again, I know you've done this before, but I think it's important to continue to let the public know what our bond rating is and other signals of our fiscal responsibility as we go into this, and if there have been any recent or expected, you know, updates for bond rating.
Absolutely. President Singh, and I certainly will start off and offer the team here any opportunity to build off what I communicate. But here in Austin ISD, you know, I think we're very proud of the fact that, you know, for many years now, we've had very, very strong financials, and that finds its way into several different documents and things that we actually kind of use to operate efficiently every single year. One of those is our AAA bond rating. It is something that very few school districts in the state of Texas have. Katrina Montgomery, our Acting Chief Financial Officer, can certainly speak to some of the most recent meetings that continue to establish that within the market. And what that means is that we're able to borrow at a very, very low interest rate, which has a meaningful impact when it comes to bond sales, you know, any costs that may have some type of interest carry cost. And so one of the things that we often talk about is maintaining that bond rating helps us do a lot. And we're very protective of it. We have very strong financials. We budget conservatively, and it's something that just honestly, we should be very, very proud of, and we didn't get there overnight. It took really the better part of a decade, if not longer, to actually get to that point. The other thing that we often look, look at is the first rating, which is a process that's been established by TEA. They review our financials, we submit documents. A lot of the information is based on PIMS information, which is directly tied to our students. And for many years now, we've had a superior rating, which is above 90. I think last year, we were at 96. Is that correct? And we're projected to be superior again this year. I believe it's 94, 95? So these are all very, very, very strong financial indicators and classifications that AISD has. The other thing that I would also point out and communicate to anybody that's listening is, you know, we have multiple controls that we exercise on an annual basis. Certainly, we have our annual audit. We have our auditors, they're a third party. They come in, they spend lots of time with our financial department and many other departments as well. That audit is very dense, there's a lot of information, and it's posted online, it's submitted, and we've continued to be, to be in a very good standing with those audits as well. And then we also have a partner that actually directly reports to the Board in Gibson, and they perform area audits. And these are areas of focus, not necessarily because they're areas of concern, but because the large organization that we have, there's just lots of things happening. And so they look at different areas. I think most recently, in the last 18 months, SHARs, there's been payroll and procurement, all within finance, and all of those have been positive. So any minor issues have been adjusted immediately. So we are very, very protective. We are very, very conservative, and we take this very seriously. So those are some of the things that we do, and that's how we use that to support improved efficiencies within our system. I don't know, Ms. Montgomery, if there's anything you'd like to add, but that's-
No, you did a great job.
Thank you. So President Singh, was that helpful?
That was. And so just to be clear, we, our bond rating has not declined in recent months, correct?
Correct. And in fact, I don't know, Ms. Montgomery, if you'd like to offer just a brief overview of some of the meetings that you've recently had when we meet with rating agencies.
Yes, so we have three rating agencies that rates the district. It's Moody's, Fitch and Crowell, and we have all of their highest ratings. We recently had a ratings call last week, and so we received the information today for us to review, so that will be a forward, a fourth rating agency. So I agree with Superintendent Segura that we are very proud of our ratings and all the work that went into that for years and years and years to make sure that AISD was in the best financial position that we could be.
Perfect. Thank you. And I have one more quick clarifying question, just reviewing the numbers again. So we would bring $41 million into our coffers per year, correct?
Net $41 million. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, net, okay. And then we're proposing about $78 million in additional cuts, right?
Over a two-year period.
Over the next two years?
Yes.
Okay, okay. That's helpful. All right, thank you. So we're actually, we're cutting more than we're bringing in.
That is correct.
That is, that is correct. And I think that's also, it's also important to note that we took a $30 million reduction last year. And so when you think in terms of kind of fiscal, you know, budget cycles and fiscal years, you know, we have to be thinking in terms of two and three years, just because the cuts can't be implemented or adjustments can't be made without communicating, without making sure the systems can adjust. And so that's why we've taken the $30 million. We're going to continue to do the work, and we'll have that conversation later this afternoon, or I should say evening, and then at the same time, you know, looking at this potential opportunity.
Okay. So, well, actually, and actually now that I think about it, so if we're getting, and if we're netting $41 million a year, but we're cutting about 80 over two years, so it actually equals out then, right? 40 plus 40 cuts over two years, right? So is it more correct to say we're bringing in, or we're cutting as much as we're bringing in, or we're cutting than what we would be netting?
We're, we're cutting more, and the reason that we say it that way is because in one fiscal, this is an annual budget, and so in isolation in one fiscal year, we have a $78 million opportunity to reduce costs, I should say, that is tied to each fiscal year. The revenue that's generated by the voter authorized tax rate election would increase the revenue by $41 million per year. So in a fiscal year after two years, you would expect the net, the reduction to be 78 with the offsetting revenue of being 40. So we are cutting more than we are asking for.
Great. Thank you.
Of course. Trustee Boswell?
I have a follow-up question to that for people who don't know our full budget number off the top of their heads. When we're talking about a $30 million cut last year, when we're talking about a $78 million cut over two years, to be more than $100 million in cuts, that's more than 10% of our entire operating budget.
Correct.
So these are not small cuts.
These are not small cuts. I think oftentimes, people, you know, community members or folks will pull our total budget, which includes the recapture payment. And just by the way, we did send that. There's confirmation, $699 million was transferred earlier this week. And so our operating budget is a little bit less than a billion. And so when, you're right, when you think about 30 million, it's a 3%. And then you add, you know, the 78 million on top of that, it's 7.8%, you know, more or less, that over the course of two and a half years will exceed 10%. And also, it's important to note that the, you know, 86% of our, of our budget is in schools, right? And so we don't, and people, I'm sorry, it's people. And so we look at the cuts we took this past year, the 30 million, that was out of operations and central administration. And so it, we cut 30 million, but it wasn't out of the 100, it was really out of, out of the billion, it was out of 300 million. And so that's why we felt that in a different way in the central administration versus the classrooms.
92% of our costs are at campuses.
Yeah, 92, 92% of our costs are at campuses. Thank you, Jacob. Dr. Reach.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. I think just for context, for anyone who says we're being wasteful, we're being. To cut 10% of a budget that's already very lean is, is the opposite of wasteful, and really appreciate that context, putting those numbers in the context of our whole. So thank you for that.
Trustees, any other comments or questions? And President Singh, you're good? All right. So at this time, we will adjourn our public meeting and go straight into our special meeting. Secretary Boswell, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is that Trustee Lugo? Okay. Having a motion by Secretary Boswell and a second by Trustee Lugo to adjourn, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. The motion passes unanimously. This meeting is adjourned at 6:31. In compliance with Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, I call to order a meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Austin Independent School District for Thursday, August 15th at 6:31. A quorum of the Board is physically present at AISD Central Office to conduct this meeting. This meeting is streaming live on AISD TV and Apple TV. It is also being broadcast on cable, Channel 22 through Spectrum, Austin Broadband, and on Channel 99 through AT&amp;T U-verse. Closed captioning in English is available on those platforms for individuals who are deaf or hard of hearing. Thank you for joining us. Tonight, the Board was going to consider approval of a voter approval tax rate election. Before that, however, we must approve the 2425 tax rate. We will take this action at a special meeting on Monday, August 19th at 5:30 PM. We will, we will also review and consider approval of the district tax rate election. We will offer public comment for this meeting. You may either sign up to speak in person or record your testimony by calling 512-414-0130 between 3:30 and 4:45 PM tomorrow. Friday, August 15th, or 7:45 AM to 4:30 PM, the day of the meeting on Monday, August 19th. So we will now move on to our other action item, which is item 2.2. Does this happen in open session?
The vote does.
Is this, item 2.2. Secretary Boswell, do we have a motion to approve item 2.2?
Yes, I move to approve item 2.2.
Is there a second?
Second.
Trustees, is there any discussion on this item? Having a motion by Secretary Boswell and a second by Trustee Lugo to approve item 2.2, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Those abstaining? The motion passes with six in favor, one abstention. Thank you. We will now recess the open meeting at 6:33 PM and move to executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551, .074, .072, .073, .087, .076, .0821, and .071. When we are finished with executive session, we will return to the open session to hold a retreat on budget priorities. Thank you. So we will now reconvene the open meeting at 8:51 PM. We thank our viewing audience for their patience. We'll now move on to the Workshop on Guiding Principles for Budget Transformation. We also have, in addition to the trustees present, I believe we have present- I believe we have President Singh on Zoom. Superintendent Segura, can you introduce our workshop tonight?
Absolutely. Vice President Foster and trustees, really excited about the work we're going to do together tonight, or I should say, you all are going to do together tonight. We have here with us Dr. Jacob Reach, Chief of Government Relations and Board Services. We have Ms. Katrina Montgomery, who is our Acting Chief Financial Officer. And as, as y'all know, and certainly our community and staff know, we're in the process of really thinking through what opportunities may exist within our existing budget, acknowledging that we're going to have to think about doing things differently if we're really going to reduce the overall burden within our operating budget. And so the purpose of today's work session or workshop is to get feedback from our trustees that will define the guardrails, I should say, of a process that we're about to go through. We'll talk briefly here in a moment around the committee and some of the milestones that we expect to hit. But as we've said before, you know, in the last fiscal year, we took a thirty-million-dollar reduction in our expenses. We need to continue to identify opportunities to reduce our costs, but do it in a way that is thoughtful, do it in a way that aligns with our values, do it in an equitable way, and I think, most importantly, do it with community and with direction from our trustees. And so today, the purpose is to kind of set those, I, we use guardrails, we're probably going to say guardrails twenty more times in this meeting, but kind of those things that need to kind of shape the direction that we head in. That's really what we're looking for today. And so we'll, we have an exercise that we're going to go through later on that will hope, that I hope will kind of get the juices going, and we'll have a dialogue around it. The goal is going to be to drive towards consensus, and Jacob will talk about how we do that. And then, as you all share, Ms. Montgomery and the team will kind of collect that information, and then over a period of time, as we have a discussion and kind of maybe condense down some of the different items, we'll draw towards, draw towards consensus. So that is really going to be the work. I expect it to be fairly efficient. And with that, I'll hand it over to Dr. Jacob Reach to start us off.
All right. Thank you, Superintendent Segura and Board of Trustees. So tonight, we'd like to take a process where we think through our board's guiding principles for this budget work. So that is our overall goal, is to understand what are the principles that we have set up while the district goes through our long-term budget work. And while these are not necessarily the words we need to use, we're kind of thinking it around, you know, what are those guardrails? What are those good governance use or policies that say, this is the boundary that we can think about when we're going through this budget work? Or what are the guide rails? What are the protocols that we want to think about? So overall, we're really talking about the board's priorities, what they see for the overall budget work. So to help us come to consensus, we want to try and use a nominal group technique to help us build out individual priorities for all of us, or for each of you, and then come together as a group of nine, because trustee Singh is with us online. And I'll spoil a little bit, trustee Singh, if you don't mind. She already sent hers in, so I've already got her, her work on this. But we are going to ask for each trustee to use the cards provided by Ms. Montgomery and their team. That's right. So you have two in front of you. You have one that has five spots, and that's the, the guardrails, the priorities. And then you have another one that we did is explore. So that may be other things that we want to look at. It may not necessarily be a guardrail. It may be, well, have we thought about this program? So it's kind of that suggestions. And we, we want all of that information. But right now, I want to focus on the sheets that you have with the five guidelines or priorities. So we are going to ask trustees to take some time and think through, what are some priorities we need to consider when going through the budget work? So I'm going to use an example that does not have to do with a real program, because last time I mentioned a program, I got six emails saying, like, why are you thinking about that program? So we'll just say widgets. And so if what you're wanting us to think about is, have we considered the widgets at Austin ISD enough, and have we looked into that, then that may be one idea that first comes to mind. And then you'll want to say, well, please consider that you've looked at widgets across the district. What we would ask is that it not be, please don't touch widgets in Austin ISD, because that doesn't really help us make that next step forward. However, we recognize that there may be something to where you need to say, like, well, you know, we really want to take this one into special consideration on how we address it. And so, and so that's okay. But one thing that we would ask is just that it not be a, don't do something, that it is, for instance, a, please make sure that you've thought of everything else before you address widgets, as an example. So I hope using an example that wasn't school-related didn't throw us too much off, but that's kind of what we want to look at. We are going to take some time to allow you to fill out the cards.
Fifteen minutes.
Fifteen, we did fifteen minutes?
Fifteen.
Okay. So we'll do fifteen minutes, and if we end sooner than that, then we can come back together. But what we're going to ask when we're done is to start hearing what you've written down as your guardrail. And we're going to start writing those up on the boards around us. And if we hear others that are similar, or maybe Andrew will share one, and then some of the other, you will say, oh, I have one just like that. Well, then we'll know so that we can combine those, so that when we start providing, it's not scores, is it weights?
Weights.
Yeah. Weights to these, you're not fighting between two very similar ideas. So we'll try and group them as best that we can. So once we have everything up on our boards, we'll then take some time with the four sticky notes that you have. And those are weighted, starting at fifteen, so that's your highest. That's like your top priority. So that's the number one thing that we need to do, that if you feel that any idea that's brought forward must address literacy, you know, then you put your full fifteen points to that one. And then when we're done, and everyone's brought those up, we'll, we'll score them and see how we rank on those, and we'll put them in order. So then we can start discussing, well, here's where the board sees general consensus around some of these items. So before we start the activity, I want to make sure, are there any questions or anything else that we may want to change before we get into the activity? Yes, trustee Hunter?
Might I have another example?
Yeah.
Might I have another example?
Of course. So one second, let me give you another one. Yeah, let me pull up the one on my phone.
There's, there's lots and lots and lots of ones that we've talked about.
It was the language.
Yeah.
Like the language, you caught me off guard with the, you can't say, don't cut this. So what was a positive example with widgets?
Understood.
Something you could say about widgets?
Yeah. So instead of saying, don't touch widgets, it's, please make sure that you've considered the, see, now I can't even think of another example.
Limit the impact of widgets.
Yeah, that you limit the impacts on widgets, is what we would ask. So...
Yeah, I think one of the things that we run into, because the idea here is, this, we're going to drive to consensus on just the list, right? And just recognize that everything that is produced will carry on, but it's important for the committee that's been created to understand kind of where the priorities of the board are as a whole. And so an example might be, and I'm going to, I'm going to use one that will, okay, so planning time. Say, elementary school planning time. I'm going to say this one because it's something that has been talked about for years, but in a process that we're about to go through, if a trustee said, you know, in the budgeting process, limit impact to planning time in elementary schools, would be one thing that you could send to us, provide to us. A second one could be, limit impact to secondary planning time. Now, you could combine them, but the challenge is, when you're working through this process, as we develop budgets and figure out strategies, the detail helps, if that makes any sense. And so we wouldn't want to say, do not touch planning times, because what'll end up happening is, everybody begins to put stickers on something, and it becomes finite. No matter what we do, the board absolutely will, as a consensus or as a group, will say, do not touch this. And so we want to create some flexibility and not make things so definite. Now, if we list them all up and miss consensus, and you all say, you know what, I really think that one needs to be definite, then I think we can have that conversation. But as you all build them out initially, I think it would be preferable to allow that flexibility.
Yeah. So trustee Hunter...
Is that helpful, the way I described that?
Trustee Hunter, the other example that I had was actually one from our equity framework, and it would be similar to saying, ensure that we define what student, staff, community groups are most adversely affected by the decisions we're bringing forward. That could be another priority of this board.
Yeah.
Or make sure that there is data aligned to that decision. So it doesn't even have to necessarily be about an individual program. It could be that idea or that, that theory behind it. Did that answer your question? Trustee Kaufman?
Yes.
Okay. Trustee Gonzalez, do you have a question?
Could you, would it be possible to give us, like, some sentence stems on how to start these, these, our phrasing, just so that we're all kind of going in a similar direction? Like, could we write them up on that board?
Definitely. Do we want to spend some time also working as a group on that, too, if there's some ideas?
I would love to.
Jacob, you're, okay. We could do the sentence, sentence stems. That's totally cool. What I think, we want to get to a point where you're sharing your own ideas, and then you present them, and we go, trustee Gonzalez, you provide one. Trustee Kaufman, you provide one. And we're writing all of them down. And the idea is, as, you may say something one way, and trustee Hunter say it ever so slightly, but they're really the same thing. And what we'll do is come to consensus. Do these two things mean the same thing? Make a modification on the, on the way it's written, and then we'll go round and round and round. We'll go five times. And what'll ultimately happen is, maybe there isn't forty things, maybe there's twenty-two or maybe thirty, and then we begin to rank. And so through that process, what'll happen is, you'll see weighting occurring, and then those things that, as a board, y'all believe should be considered above all else, will come to the top. So we can provide some sentence stems, I think, if that's helpful.
So, I think the substance is going to be helpful. Yeah. Or should I worry about the phrase?
Get you on your mic. No, and we also may...
I should not worry about the phrasing. I should really focus on, what's the substance of my idea?
Correct.
Okay.
And we're also going to work to group, like, ones together. So the exact phrasing may not even stay.
Right. And it's, we ought to hear each other, right? And kind of, and then kind of build upon it, and then we'll, we'll go ahead and go through a process of scoring them.
I'm still lost.
Do you have time limits on these?
I'm still lost. I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm still lost. So do we have, it has to be a phrase? I can't just say mentors.
Just say whatever.
What was it, trustee Stavrova?
So do I need to say it in a phrase, or do I just say mentors?
You can say it however you want. What I'll say is, when you say mentors, we may ask a question, like, when you say mentors, what are you meaning? Are you saying that you want to, as part of a, this process, limit the impact or the reduction of mentors across Austin ISD?
Or do we need to engage mentors in the process?
So that's exactly right. So that was, that was a way that we would interpret mentors, and that conversation with you helps us define it, so that we can incorporate it to the process.
Okay.
So you don't have to worry about writing every detail. We'll, we'll kind of work through that together.
Okay, great.
So it's nine-oh-four. Can you give us kind of time parameters on the sets of activities?
So let's go to nine-fifteen and check where we're at.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm still lost.
So, do we have, it has to be a phrase? I can't just say mentors.
Say whatever.
What was it, trustees of others?
So, do I need to say it in a phrase, or do I just say mentors?
You can say it however you want. What I'll say is, when you say mentors, we may ask a question, like, when you say mentors, what are you meaning? Are you saying that you want to, as part of this process, limit the impact or the reduction of mentors across Austin ISD?
Or do we need to engage mentors?
Yes.
In the process?
So, that's exactly right. So, that was, that was a way that we would interpret mentors. And that conversation with you helps us define it, so that we can incorporate it to the process.
Okay.
So you don't have to worry about writing every detail. We'll, we'll kind of work through that together.
Okay, great.
So it's 9:04. Can you give us kind of time parameters on the sets of activities?
So let's go to 9:15 and check where we're at.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Um. 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 Yes, sir.
Jacob gave us till 9:15. It is 9:14. So you should wrap up your notes.
All right, so we are going to-
Thank you.
Phil Duncan.
Game show style.
You've got the jacket for it.
We'll ask trustees to share out one of their items, and we will write them up. And if another trustee has an item that they feel is very similar or the same, you okay sharing that now?
Well, what I would, what I would, what I would prefer you all do is trustee Gonzalez reads his first. Trustee Gonzalez reads his first, or any trustee. We start with trustee Lugo, it doesn't really matter to me. And we just go around. I wouldn't want you to scratch it out before you actually say it. If that, that makes any sense. I don't, like, they read them all out. Get all 40 out on the table. And then, and then as we read them, what you'll find, it'll be similarities, and then we'll collapse and make sure there's understanding. Are they two separate things? Because they may not be. Let's have that conversation. And then we, we kind of winnow it down at that point. So we're gonna-
But we have 45, because we have our keys.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Forty-five, perfect.
And then, you want us to read one through five, or just one?
One.
Like, okay. I'll read yours.
Run, Robin.
Yeah, run, Robin. Who wants to go first? You going first, trustee? Okay, then we're gonna go this way.
And the guard rule. Please limit the impact on-
My-
Okay.
Limit?
Please limit the impact on fine arts.
Did I do that correct?
That was-
Yes.
Perfect.
Limit the impact on fine arts.
Limit the impact on measurably high-impact, low-cost programs and areas.
Say that again, please.
Limit the negative impact on measurably high-impact, low-cost programs and areas.
Trustee both.
Does that not make sense?
Oh, it makes sense.
It, it makes sense. The, the ratio of low cost to high leverage is what you're trying, I think what we're trying to establish. Right?
Yeah.
Um. So, so, yeah, that, let's write it that way, and then we can look at-
High leverage, low cost.
Yeah.
Should be protected.
Which is a high return on intent. Right.
And mine is not unrelated to that.
And mine is not unrelated to that. Consider where spending money helps to generate money. Programs that build enrollment, that leverage outside funds, considering, you know, where we're spending, where we get a lot.
I love that. Okay, so the-
Consider where we're spending money helps to generate money.
In terms of enrollment, or a program that we pay a little bit for that's highly leveraged with outside funds, and with partners, things like that.
Yeah. Yeah. And I would, I would say those are very different. Like, I think the way that I would interpret those. So I'm glad that you read that, I guess what I'm saying.
And when trustee Zapata's-
When trustee Zapata's ready, we're ready for trustee Zapata.
My turn?
Yes, ma'am.
Mic's on.
Okay. Literacy be inclusive at all. Investments to student outcomes. Align to student outcomes.
So, would it be limit impacts to literacy-focused programs and initiatives? To write it in a way that protects it if it's a cut? Trustee both, would that-
Okay, since, I thought we couldn't say programs?
Oh, well, no, we can do, we can write it that way. I'm just trying to make sure I understand what you're saying.
Yes. Yes, that, everything that we're doing, investing in, is, it has a piece of literacy that's connecting to align with our student outcome goals.
Okay. Literacy be inclusive, align. So the align to student outcomes, I think is really important. And the way that I would interpret that is, we want to limit impacts to items that are aligned to student outcomes. Like, that, that's one way that I would process that in a larger process. Well, but we wrote it perfectly. I think we can capture it. Trustee Lugo?
Um, mine isn't really a limit. It's more, it's a little different. So the idea is around examining technology contracts, like continuing to examine technology contracts for cost savings, you know, maybe through lapse of term or something else.
Trustee Whitley Chu?
I didn't know if I was supposed to wait till you're done writing. I would say be, before considering cuts, please consider, or I guess when we're considering cuts. I wrote a lot of stuff, okay. Mr. Whitley, start writing. Okay, yes, that's fine, that's fine, I'm sorry. I'm like going out of order. Avoid cuts that increase teacher workload and make working conditions poorer, Avoid cuts that increase teacher workload and make working conditions poorer, which increases costs from having to hire new people, onboard new people, and decreases student achievement because we're not retaining veteran teachers and we, and a constant churn of novice teachers.
So it's avoid cuts that increases teacher workload?
And...
I think it's slightly different. I would say, avoid cuts that impact teacher workload.
Yeah, those two trustee Willie Chu with the notes I think can capture it all. Because there's many, many things that you probably didn't even say that would contribute to that as well.
Sure.
So avoid cuts that impact, that I would say increase teacher workload. So instead of impacts, they increase teacher workload. And worsen working conditions, right? That would be like the way that I think it might get tighter.
Tighter, yeah.
Because we know both of those things, if we do them, we're gonna be moving in the wrong direction when it comes to vacancies and like everything really.
So I'm gonna read one from trustee Singh. Don't say no to a proposed cut without saying yes or suggesting an alternative.
Thanks, Jerry. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, just making sure. Thank you. I think the idea here is for us to, I think any, we want, we want the administration to feel like they can bring us things without us saying no to everything. So I think it's helpful for us to model for the community in some ways. It's like, okay, if there's something we don't like, that's fine, and we're all gonna have things that we don't, that are unacceptable to us. But I think it's always helpful to say, like, don't cut this, but I'd be okay with looking at something else and name what that might be.
Thank you. Trustee Gonzalez?
So I have, consider campus nuanced changes to staffing configurations based on student outcomes. Invest in historically underserved communities.
I know it's on camera too. When determining staff allocations, please keep in mind vulnerable communities and student outcomes.
I like the nuance around the, the hyperlocal and the differentiation. I was trying to get at that too. So I'll, I'll do my one that seems a variation of this emerging theme. Ensure that cuts in any area are equity-driven. And one thing that to, to put a finer point on it, whether it's transportation or planning time, or let's do planning time, that it might be that locally, this campus or these campuses can absorb something and still be alright. And this campus cannot absorb something. And so we might actually say, I know this hurts, but we're gonna do this thing, but we're not gonna do it in the places, we're gonna do it in the places that can absorb the impact, if that makes sense. Another example would be like in transportation. We have a philosophy of providing transportation, but it could be that we can differentiate and say, for this community, we're going to protect it, or in this area, or in these... My, and, and, and the, if it, if it meets these conditions, we're gonna protect it. But in other cases, we might let the transportation go.
Ready?
Yes.
Okay, preserve a wide range of programs and options, including recognizing that we are not yet equitably providing that. That we, we actually need to grow some of that even as we're cutting. So to preserve a wide range of programs and options, when we're talking about advanced academics, the arts, you know, options that our campuses have, and recognize that as we're cutting, there are places where that still needs to grow. We can't say, we're cutting, so you never get theater, we're cutting, so you never get AP Calculus, we're cutting, so you never get, like, we need to preserve a big range of programs. And options while recognizing we have some places where that still needs to grow. We can't let the, we can't let the cuts decimate what's, where it's working and just shut that conversation down where we're not there yet.
Mentors, mentors, priority processes be intentionally assigned to the most highest at-risk student population. Example, students on probation, fed, ALC students, et cetera.
So. So mentors, the mentor, the process of placing mentors, right, should be prioritized for those students that have been historically underserved. And then we could use the, I mean, we would define and also see what that, those student groups are. Is that one way to, to kind of maybe tighten that a little bit? Would that, because mentors priority processes be intentionally be assigned to highest at-risk student populations? And so as part of this process, you know, we'd want to, to the extent possible, preserve where mentors are, in fact, you know, supporting schools that have been historically underserved.
Students.
Students, yeah. Okay, so I, I think we can work that both ways.
Thank you.
Alright, mine was, limit the impact on counseling, mental health, and academ- so like counseling slash mental health and academic counseling.
Mine is, don't fail to begin with small budget items that don't affect student learning and experience. I think it's, it's easier to slash something big, but I think there's probably still a lot of smaller or low-hanging fruit that's, would be less damaging to cut and do that first.
First, the impact, the educational experience. Thing is, there's a lot of small items where with a thousand, like the thousands of lines. Thousand, a thousand, a thousand times, like, you know, six departments, you know, it builds up quite quickly. So I guess process-wise, what you're saying is, let's look at the small things that show up everywhere and those things that maybe are furthest away from the classroom, right? And, and we do have some of those, some of those we've begun to find, but there are others for sure. And, and there's like, like miscellaneous, four thousand dollars in technology, or miscellaneous in professional, you know, those things exist. Is that kind of?
That, that's right. And, and yes, I know a lot of it is, has been cut, and I think, yeah, just always starting there.
Yeah. Trustee, oh, I guess President Singh through via proxy.
Okay, I can, I can speak. So I would say, define what the line is for too many cuts at HQ. You know, at some point, you know, the thinking here is, you know, at some point if we cut too much at HQ, it denies campuses of important centralized services. So, like, an extreme example might be, like, we would never cut food services. For example, because, you know, and leave each campus to fund for their own, you know, food. In the same way, like, so as we're thinking about, you know, how much should we cut from centralized, say, curriculum services or things like that, and just, you know, I don't feel like I have a great sense. I think the first round of cuts we made, it was very easy to say, like, limit cuts to the classroom. The second round of cuts, you know, as we go through that, I do wanna see the nuance and hear from the administration, kind of like, you know, how, you know, if a cut, if cuts are made at central office, how would they impact what's happening in classrooms and how much is too much?
Okay. I, I think when you say limit, President Singh, are you, in your mind, are you thinking a dollar amount? Are you thinking, have the process be able to communicate when we're encroaching on those things that are gonna be, like?
Yeah, the latter. I don't really, yeah, I don't, I'm not really thinking in terms of limiting, it's really more defining what the line is, and, and only you all would be able to, to know what that is.
Yeah. Okay. Adirond, you're doing a great job. Great handwriting, better, the best handwriting of us four collectively for sure. Trustee Gonzalez?
So I have, clearly explain rationale to allocate resources based on special student population need. To allocate resources? Based on special population, special student population need. And when I say special pops, I mean like, students that receive special education, students that are emergent bilingual.
Do you, I mean, do you, so we, we've defined historically underserved student groups. Do you want to make this one, do you wanna call out special education, emergent bilingual, or do you want to allow it to be expanded into other historically underserved student population, student groups?
I, would you, the latter.
Okay, so I would put open paren, historically underserved student groups. Thank you for, for... Perfect, okay. Trustee Kaufman?
Listen to the people impacted before the cuts are final.
Good one. Not as fast as you, trustee Hunter, writing. You're doing great. They wanted to type, well, we'll get into that. No, 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 because the screens are probably, we, interaction, cut, cut it out?
My students, I bought them little journals, they have to write this year, they're not happy. They're adults. Consider aligning transportation with student needs versus programs. Right now, everybody got a bus to go everywhere. And I would rather see students who have to cross thirty-five have a bus that live within that two-mile radius than students who are doing special programming. Not because I don't want them to get to the programming, you could hub the programming, right? We don't nearly use capital metro nearly enough, nearly enough. And I could go from my house to Navarro, to Northeast, to LBJ, and it probably would take me an hour and a half to get to all of those schools, the fifteen-minute wait. But it would take me an hour and a half to get to all those schools. To get to Northeast, it would take me like three minutes to get to LBJ. I'd have to change a bus, so it would take me like twenty.
So I, point of clarification. When you look at standard transportation and then you have programmatic transportation, do you want to expand that to anything else? You know, we have fine arts transportation, you know, athletic transportation.
We don't actually have fine arts transportation. We have magnet transportation.
They will, well, fine arts programs will pay for transportation, or we will pay for transportation to move them. It is an expense that we carry as an organization. So do you want to expand it, or do you want to leave it, like?
What I'm saying is, if there's cuts have to be made, I'd rather a kid, an eight-year-old that has to cross thirty-five, walk past a homeless encampment, right? Walk down a street with no sidewalks, have a bus, first.
Got it.
And I'm hearing a similarity to what I was saying about ensure that cuts are equity-driven. I'm, I'm hearing a, that, that, that's, you said it better, what I was trying to say about transportation. Where items are highly valued and still subject to cut, have protocols and processes for systematically engaging alternative approaches to funding before cutting. I know, I know, I know. So, okay, so.
Don't you wish you had taken that shorthand class?
So, so there's, so somebody maybe can help me. So here is something that's funded centrally, and the principals on this campus, this campus, this campus really like it. And we say, kill the contract, but if you talk to the principal, they'd say, I got local funds. And so, I'll take it on. So, or, or in this case, there's a donor that's been always saying, I really love this thing. I don't know what the alternative funding is, but if it's highly valued before cutting it, have a process to think about an alternative. In other words, don't just cut. So if it. Find an alternative, but I wouldn't say find an alternative to everything.
If it's fine, it's, it's finite, yeah, I would, I would be.
I would say, if it, if it meets some threshold, like if it's determined highly valued, however you determine that, engage the protocol to look for an alternative funding. But absolutely finite, not just everything. I'm so sorry that that was a mouthful.
Highly valued programs do not just cut, look for alternative funding.
Yep.
I would say valued, I'd say a highly leveraged opposed to valued.
I'll take it.
Will you take my friendly amendment?
Yes.
I'm just, it just helps me under like kind of process, like what?
No, absolutely, absolutely. I love that distinction. Highly, highly leveraged.
We're ready for you, trustee Boswell.
Are you ready? Okay. Rethink the cost of elementary school planning time and how it is offered. It's a big rock. I'm not saying it's not important. I'm saying there may be other ways. And how it is offered, rethink the cost of elementary school planning time and how it is offered.
So that might be you. Did you want it to be that an area of exploration, or do you want that to be a?
That's more an area of exploration. I'll put it on my explore. Yes, I will, I will add that to my explore. I have more than two explore. Sorry.
No, it's, it's okay.
Okay, I will move on. Consider data beyond MAP and STAR, including proven successes within our own district, as we decide what to cut.
Good one. So, consider.
Consider data beyond MAP and STAR, including proven successes within our own district. And when I think about proven successes, I'm thinking of something like the academy model at Akins and Austin High that has been so immensely successful in retaining students, building relationships, creating pathways, lots of things. I, we have lots of good proven models in our district that I don't think we look to often enough. So I think we need to consider data expansively and think about what's working.
So, so it's like the quantitative coupled with the qualitative? Because I think some of the program, some of the things that maybe we're discussing are gonna be difficult to develop numerically, right? And so I think when the LRP, we actually created a process that had both.
Yes.
So when you say math and star, I'm kind of going like, you know, analytical and numeric, and then maybe a little bit more qualitative.
And we also have analytical and numeric that are not just map and star. We have attendance, we have enrollment, we have retention, we have lots of other, we, we're a big data organization that doesn't always act like it.
I agree.
Yeah, thank you.
Review contracts to fill where cuts are made to align, to align with student outcomes.
Okay, I think we've. Contract review to align with student outcomes. So it's review both ways, right? So, so because we're looking at a cost reduction strategy, the assumption would be cuts. Contract review to align with student outcomes.
So there may be existing contracts that we already have but are not aligned.
That's right. Got it. Katrina, did you get that?
No. Tell me again, sit again, please.
I think we have it almost. I think we, on the last one, just do contract. I can't say, yeah.
Contract review to align with student outcomes.
So, the way to say it is, is a cut is, do not, in the contract review process, and I don't write this, limit cuts to contracts that align with student outcomes. That's, that's, I think that's how we would actually, like actually operationalize it. But I think I can get that from here.
I don't think you wanna limit contracts. We want as many contracts of people to invest, right?
Limit cuts.
Oh, limit cuts. Okay, contract cuts, okay.
Before proposing campus consolidation, explore all other possible options, including generating or monetizing non-school properties. And I think, like, I'm at the point where I'm, I'm looking at the stuff, mine is more of an explore. You know, this is a pretty, I mean, this is, this is really, really hard, because we're in a position where we need more, and we got less from the state. And I don't know if we're moving, I'm, I'm kind of like done with having cut suggestions, but I can hold.
We can, we can put explorers over here just so that we continue with the rotation, but yeah, we won't put it on this side. I know, you're good here, don't, don't worry, Katrina.
And so what I'd really like to see explored is when looking at every cut, being mindful of the costs of cuts. And examples where school closure decreases enrollment, increases disinvestment from public schools. Cutting, cutting planning time that increases teacher stress, decreases the student experience, decreases achievement, increases turnover, increases our costs in HR, and continues that churn of teachers. And lowering our clerk support staff, janitorial staff, decreases customer service, decreases enrollment, and increases someone else's workload, which can cause, so it's all this long-term. We have to be really, really long-term in our thinking.
I almost think that needs to go on this one.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
That's fine.
When you were reading it, were you thinking that? I, I think that one's over here, because that's, that's like process. And I think that you're totally right. There are things, we could cut off something and, in two years, and it paying two times for it. And so I really think that needs to go here, trustee Willie Chu, if that's okay?
Yeah, that's okay. And it's like, you know, like cutting off my foot so I don't have to buy a second shoe. I mean, that's where we are at this point.
Consider how disinvestment breeds further disinvestment. Because we are disinvesting, but consider the impact of that disinvestment.
Long, yeah, long, long-term. Because I think, I think what happens is we often look at short-term, like, okay, one fiscal year, two fiscal years, but like, emphasis is... That was a good one. We're not ranking them or anything, but that was a good one.
We actually have a check here, like, if you say it too long, like the look that shoots back at you, it's like, what? Oh, you, you don't see it. I saw it. When my mega-sentence came out, the looks were like.
Is trustee, President Singh on, online?
Yes, I am. Hey, y'all. I am loving this conversation, by the way. And I just wanna, I really liked what trustee Hunter said earlier about the transportation, because that kind of spoke to thinking more transformationally and not just cutting our way out of this. So thank you for that. So I would say, if we consider consolidations, they would need to be done humanely, collaboratively, and I think, you know, with some clear ideas for the vacated property. So it would give people something to fight for, you know, whatever that next thing might be, rather than something to fight against. And that might be, you know, if that is a path that we are willing to go down, it might put a different lens on it. So.
So we have on the board, consider consolidations humanely, comma, ensure, I mean, I'm thinking here. We have on the board, consider consolidations humanely, comma, ensure, I mean, I'm thinking here, I want to make sure I'm hearing what President Singh said. Ensure that the repurposing strategy is defined prior and that it's done collaboratively with community. Like, I think the second point that President Singh made was that it's not done in isolation.
Correct. And I think like back in 2019 when we closed schools, we kind of did the opposite. We kind of put a moratorium on thinking about what those new properties could be used for. But I actually feel like maybe we would have. It would have been smart to actually work with the community about asking, not should we close the school or not, but what would most benefit this community right now? And maybe it's a school, but maybe it's, you know, a health clinic, or maybe it's something else that we hadn't really considered. Maybe it's affordable housing. I don't know. But it would really allow folks to, it would, it would not create like a vacuum and might actually give people something to fight for rather than just fighting against. And, and I think at the same time, it would, I mean, I have said this before, I think there are some, you know, some folks out there who are willing to engage in the conversation. And so thinking about how we can invite, like, that would be, like, we would be so lucky to have communities that would want, that where it's coming from them and they're generating this, rather than us deciding for communities what's best for them. And I think that's something to always keep in mind, to speak to Kevin's earlier guardrail, to ensure that we're checking in with impacted communities. And having them help drive it, yeah.
That was Trustee Gonzalez, yeah.
No, that's right.
Sorry.
President Singh, we're going to Trustee Gonzalez next.
There was somebody else who said her brilliant thing. Trustee Gonzalez.
That's fine, you can say it was me. I think most of my guardrails that I haven't said already have been articulated in a better way by other people.
Do you want to tell me which ones those are?
I don't remember. I don't remember which ones. I just kind of X'd them off if I heard somebody else say something that was.
Your, your scoring will reflect where you, where others alignment, so it's okay.
If you say so. I do, I guess I could say one for the explore side.
Jacob's on it.
Which is just to explore the monetization of every inch of underutilized space.
Explore monetization of any, every inch of unused. Trustee Gonzalez, I mean, Trustee Kaufman, sorry, I was looking at.
You can call me that. I have leave some room for campus decision-making and variability. I think there's a heavy emphasis, that is rightfully so, of looking at what is offered at some schools and making sure it's offered at every schools. But as we go into the crunch, and it gets crunchier, then preserving something that maybe as a district we're not. So I would use technology as an example. If there's a software thing that we find has low utilization district-wide, then we cut it entirely, but there might be three or four or 10 or 15 campuses that are using it very effectively. And to be careful to, to offer them a choice to say, you know, you can keep that, but you have to give up that. So that there's not a universal cut. And that can apply to programs, that can apply to anything. So just leave some room for campus decision-making and variability.
I would, there was a word he said that was important, some room.
Some room, yeah.
Some room versus room. And I think, the only reason I want to say that is because the scale that we're talking about. You know, even though it's a small amount to us, it could be a huge amount to campuses.
Yeah, and also the cost at the campus level can also mean maintaining an infrastructure or, or support at the district level that would make it, so it's a lot more than, I mean, so, you know, there's a lot of, the sum was very deliberate.
But, but, yeah, and I love that.
It's not just, it's a free-for-all.
Because you made a really good point. I mean, every time that there's a software that's used at a local level, the rostering, right, associated with implementation of that platform requires someone in central office to do it, right? And, and there's a lot that goes into it. So that's a really good point. I like it. Sure.
And I would say for models, there are some districts that allowed campuses to determine what happened with a certain amount of their extra money. And there are some districts that very successfully said each campus will get X amount and you know best what you should do with it. So there are some models out there.
This has been said a couple, like in a couple of different ways, but I'll say it this way. When reduce, because like Dr. Kaufman said, we can't keep everything. But when reducing duplicate program, consider hubs. So if we have, I think of one, like in my district, there's, well, part, one is not in my district, but there are three programs. And I've mapped it out. 4.7 miles one way, 7.5 miles one way. And the two programs at two other schools are inferior to a program at one school. That create a hub, right? So I don't know how that is, but I think that, so that we're not saying, and maybe it's like, I don't know, 4%, or whatever, I don't know how you operationalize that. But so that we keep the program, but it's like centralized, or not centralized, but it's hubbed, I guess.
Yeah, it's hub and spoke model.
Regionalized. That's the word I'm looking for.
No, no, it's a hub and spoke model. The question becomes, because you'd have to consider the costs associated with access to those hubs. And so I think, you know.
Is your mic on? Because I think the tech people have just given up, because my mic has been off this whole time.
My mic's been on the whole time right now.
Okay. Let me say it again. When reducing duplicate programs, consider hubs and regionalize. So we may not be able to have four different programs at four different schools, but maybe we can have it at one school and do some student sharing, or have it at two schools and, you know, right, that sort of thing.
Protect. You might not want to like just start transcribing. But here's what it is. Protect investment and growth in high-needs areas before protecting areas of strength or security.
Yeah, I bet it's not the look you want. You're right here.
So. We have areas that we've prioritized, that we've identified that we're not so great at, that we're working in, and they're either growing or we're investing in them. So protect investment and growth in high-needs areas. Basically prioritize them above areas of existing strength. So something is already strong and it can absorb a cut. Be willing to cut there first. Maybe that's, maybe, maybe I just restated something else.
I think, I think there's some similarities.
If they all dang, okay. If that's.
I always say, if you say it twice, you really mean it.
Protect investments in growth and, protect investments. I know what you're saying.
I didn't say.
I think they grow this, protect investments and any support growth in high-needs areas. I think, I know what you're saying, but it's really, it's, it's, you know, like an equitable approach to resource allocation.
You know what, it's like when you're feeding your kids and you're like, all right, you know what, you can skip this sandwich, but I need your little brother or sister to eat the sandwich, right? It's like, you're still going to get fed. You're still going to get fed. You're just not going to get that second serving. I need the other one to get the first serving first.
This is a nightly conversation.
Yes.
Exactly.
I don't.
All right, so we got, we got Trustee Foster's, or we're halfway through that, we have a more round.
I'm actually done.
The central office building is not untouchable.
Is that an explore?
No, that's a cut guardrail. But it's not untouchable, you can consider it. I'm not saying sell it, I'm not saying anything, I'm just saying. I'm saying the physical building is not untouchable as you consider cuts.
What physical building?
This building.
Oh, specifically this one.
This building is not untouchable as we consider cuts. If the committee goes there and wants to talk about that, I am A-OK with them talking about it. It needs a plan, it needs like what would happen instead, but it's not untouchable. The long-term considerations, but it's not untouchable.
We can't put.
Parent engagement, investments be led by the parent and guardians, and guardians. For, for measure, for measurable student outcomes, or aligned to student outcomes. Does that make sense? It's, we do a lot of stuff with the PSSs, but there's no alignment to, is it helping student improvement? Is it helping attendance? Is it helping, it's, how is it, how is it attaching to student outcomes?
So I think as a just general budgeting philosophy, right? Any adjustment to budget, positive or negative, should be aligned.
As a general budgeting, like process, like philosophically, we should always, if you cut or, or if you add, right, it should be in alignment with an academic initiative or an outcome, right?
Yes.
I think that, I think that's kind of, and so in this instance, we're preserving, but in, in budgeting, like in June of 2025, right, if some funds become released, you'd also look at the other way as well. How do we write it?
Because a lot of it won't need money, you know, to do the work.
Okay. So we wrote parent engage, so you were specific on parent engagement investments.
Yes.
Led by parents and guardians aligned to student outcomes.
Yes.
Okay.
Let's see, okay, so. Explore all other options before, well, actually, you know what, I want to say this differently. All right, well, let me just give it a try before y'all write anything. So explore all other cost-cutting options before increasing class size. But like, there's a second part to it, is like, I, what I'm, what I'm also trying to get at is like if we're ever going to propose increasing class sizes significantly, first we have to define what does significant mean? And then we should have the data behind the decision, like, why did we decide that particular percentage or that number or the campuses that would be impacted, or the grade levels that would be, right, like, what's, what was the decision-making process? Right? And then also, don't even go there until you've attempted all other cuts, right, all other cost-saving measures. You know what I mean?
Yes. So for this one, the way I would interpret that is. Prioritize. Preserving. Student and teacher ratios, or maybe I should say existing student teacher ratios. I mean, I don't want to say at all costs, but, you know, that's a priority for you. So maybe we figure out what that looks like. And then any adjustment requires a thoughtful methodology, right? Oh, yeah. No, no, for sure, data, but, but like, to your point, you know, what is the reason that you go up to X, right? And then are you going up to X at all campuses? Are you going to X at only some campuses because those student needs are different than student needs in other parts of the city? So I think that's maybe how I interpret that. And that's after, like, at last resort.
Right, yeah.
And I heard a, a, a general principal guardrail in that too, which is be systematic in investigating and understanding the unintended or negative consequences to anything. So any cut, understand the other side of the ledger and be systematic about it. And research-based.
Yes.
Yep. I like that, the way you wrote it, I think is good. But I think, I think the theme here, and this is where the committee and the work that we're going to do with the committee and with you all, is like, the methodology for all of these has to be like sound, right? The way that you arrive at any recommendation has to be backed up. Now, because of what we're talking about, I think what, you're going to see things that are going to be the least bad. Like, they're all going to be bad. You know, I think that's, and I think that's just something we have to acknowledge, that I don't think we're going to see something that, at this point, is, oh, it's, it's not going to have an adverse impact. It's just, to what degree? And on whom? Yeah. Absolutely.
And, oh, just one quick thing. And this probably goes without saying, but I'll say it anyways. So like, along with that methodology, like taking the time to define words that could be interpreted differently. So like earlier, when we talked about high value, one person's high value could be another person's cost savings, right? So like, defining as objectively as possible those words that we know will get really sticky really quick.
Yeah, we were just talking about that in that room. Trustee Willie Chu?
Yes. I don't know if this is an, this might be an explore.
Get ready, Jacob.
Let's see. Increase pre-K enrollment with qualifiers and tuition base. There is a huge need and a huge demand, and we turned people away who were willing to pay our tuition and willing to pay more than our tuition. And they were turned away this year. And I, I don't want that to happen next year.
Yeah, I, I like writing it there, and it's also kind of one that's here, and we'll talk about it. Maybe it was one that you made actually earlier, that maybe it was for Trustee Boswell. Explore things or evaluate things that actually generate revenue or increase revenue to the district. And this would be one of them. Right? And it's up, it's up here somewhere, I was trying to find it, but. It wasn't the first thing. Yeah, don't say no, yeah, yeah.
Consider where we spend money to generate money.
That's right. That's right. So I think that's good.
Yeah, and this would, this would be all of it. And it's, you know, something me and Mathias have talked about is, and Jacob, like, what is our retention? The students who come to us in pre-K that go all the way through is quite high, if we get people in pre-K. And, and our pre-K reputation is very, very good and, and is known with young parents, and they want to be here.
Leverage what we got. Going, going well. Trustee, President Singh, are you still up there?
I am, yeah. So I would say, is this the last one that we get to say?
Yes, yes.
Okay. All right. So I would just say that whatever we end up doing, I would like to have compelling evidence that teacher voice has been centered in the decision. And, and I'm glad that we have a, you know, this ad hoc joint budget committee. But I'll be really frank, like, I, I do want to hear, I want to make sure that we've made space. We, like, the board as well as the administration to actively engage multiple times with our Teachers of the Year, Teachers of Promise, our nationally board-certified teachers, and teachers that have actually brought up test scores for our economically disadvantaged Black and Hispanic students.
Yes.
I would probably value their opinion over almost anybody else, because they, they're the ones working with our students every single day.
Okay.
I'm in a similar place to Trustee Hunter. I think everything I've had has been said.
Okay. Love the shirt. Trustee Kaufman?
I got a bunch more, but I'll, I'll do one.
I got a bunch more, but I'll, I'll do one, and that is, um, to consider the symbolic effect of the cuts and expenditures. So recognizing that, like, if I'm, you know, I might have a $500, you know, cup of coffee. And you say, well, why are you spending $500 on a cup of coffee? But it's like, well, we're talking about, you know, we were trying to cut $40 million, this $500 cup of coffee is nothing. But if we cut, just, you know, a cup of water from every classroom, that's going to save us more money than this. Right? But symbolically, this cup of coffee may not save us much money, but it's ridiculous that we're spending money on this, right? So I just want to, got to recognize that, that the symbolic effect matters a lot when we're trying to make this a good experience for, I mean, yeah, to minimize the bad part of this experience. And so just recognizing the symbolic parts. Cause we talk sometimes around, the biggest impact is, like, you know, we have 6,000 teachers, 5,000 to 6,000 teachers. And if we do something positive or negative financially, times 5,000, that's a lot. But we have, you know, we have one board and there's nine of us. So, you know, I, does that make sense? I mean, like, so.
Yeah, no, I, I, I love that comment. I thought you were going to go the other way with it. Um, did y'all think that too when he said it?
No, I didn't.
Did you?
Yeah.
But I, I, that's, that makes, like when we took the cuts last year and the board decided to also reduce their, their travel.
Yes.
Right, like that is a some, it's.
It's a drop in the bucket, but it's a symbolic piece to say, we're not, just because us cutting our travel budget doesn't do much for the big picture of the whole thing. It does a lot for what it, for the experience that people are having in this process and sharing the pain, even if it doesn't get you.
And, and where I thought you were going to go, which is the opposite direction was, um, which is also valid, right? It's.
That's millennial thinking.
No, but I'm not a, I don't think I'm a millennial.
$500 cup of coffee.
I don't know what I am.
Just a $500 cup of coffee, it doesn't matter.
No, what I was going to say is, sometimes there are expenses that are very, very important to the organization. One might come to mind, like there is a, um, something that occurs at a, um, trans, like transportation center, right? It might be, not to use coffee, but like a refrigerator replacement, or maybe it's, you know, something like that. Where in the grand scheme of things, it may seem like, well, we don't need this extra thing.
Yes.
But for, for all of those individuals that work so hard every single day, like it's something that we need to protect, even though we would be willing to take it out of these other areas. So it would be almost in the reverse, like we're willing to protect it here, even though it is a $500 refrigerator. You know, whatever it might be, but I, that's what, but both, both are good, but I love the way you said it.
It's just an idea. And there are things like salute that might say, wow, we spent a lot of money on salute, but that's a symbolic thing that's, you know, so that's on the table with everything when you look at it, but in considering it's not just the amount of money we're spending, it's also, and not just the impact on kids directly. It's also the impact on the culture of the organization and how people feel.
Trustee Hunter?
We ready?
We're, uh, we're, well, you don't know more yellows? All right, trustee, um, or sorry, Vice President Foster?
I think we're in round six of yellow, are we?
No, we're five, this is five.
I mean, round five of yellow.
Yeah.
Uh, I, I cut out the 17 that were rewordings of the exact same thing, so, um, but, and, and this, this is kind of a repeat, but, but the fine point is allow for differentiation in cuts within areas. I think that's what we keep saying, that there should be, that you don't cut the line item, you go into the line item and can we differentiate?
That's a good one. And Jacob and Katrina have talked about that, like whenever we present things, the item itself may be the cut as a whole, but you have to recognize that it could be by school type, it could be by this, um, you know, title, non-title. It could be by, you know, the schools that have been historically underserved and are kind of identified as the schools that need the most support. You know, maybe you don't do something here, but you do it elsewhere. Like I think that's what we're talking about. And as we had these conversations, showing three deltas, right? And that's what Jacob and Katrina and I have talked about. So I think that's beautiful. We're definitely, that's how you have to do it, I think.
Mine is related to some of these, but not quite sure where, where it'll fit when we consolidate. But, um, minimize damage to what's working well as we find cuts. So we have so many strengths and we talk a lot more about what's not working than we talk about what is working. And I think, um, as a non-financial thing, but I think about how we found the teacher planning time, we did real damage to a nationally leading PE program. Um, and kind of turned a lot of things upside down. We damaged one thing to get another. And I think being really conscious of, um, it relates a little to, you know, saying like salute is an amazing program. Like what are we, what harm are we doing and really minimize that harm to, to our flagship kind of amazing things? And I think, for example, about when the power went out during the storm and we have that amazing generator at our food service, central refrigerator and freezer, that probably costs a lot of money, but saved us more than a million dollars when we needed it, right? I think about the summer theater program, um, which is an amazing thing that, that serves our entire community. I think we are unusual as a district that we have the full economic spectrum of families that our district choosing. We don't have a district with concentrated poverty. What can absorb it and what can't? But how do we continue celebrating, oh, we have an amazing CTE program, amazing dual enrollment with ACC? Like what can we, how do we protect our successes as we're finding these cuts?
Did you get that?
And celebrate our successes, that we're not all talking doom and gloom, but we're also making sure we continue to talk about. Part of it's an emotional process, right, is that we have to talk about all the good we're doing at the same time we're doing all this hard stuff. And we sometimes forget to do that.
All right, closing us out, and that last three.
I don't know if I'm saying this one right, uh, youth mental health first aid training be a priority because it impacts student outcomes.
So limit impact to, um, mental health programs and supports, right? And I think we could maybe expand that, and we can, because mental health is, you know, it shows itself in a lot of different ways in our budget on items. Um, but I think generally speaking, is that one way to kind of organize it?
Well, it's, so when you say that it's throughout, I think, you know, it's the stat, state requirement that everyone is trained, right? Every single person at every campus, so it's, and I know we have five years, but we need to take five years to make that happen. Because the sooner we get it done, it's, it's going to improve student outcomes. So I don't know how you want to say that.
I think, so right now we have, um, limit impact, I, I guess, the question, could we go faster? You know, I think we're not in a five-year time cycle, I think we were looking at less than five years for sure. Last time I looked at the, the priority and initiative. Uh, but as far as this process goes, we wouldn't want to do anything that makes that longer, right? That's one way I would say it.
Okay.
But I think it's also important to know that, you know, as we're going through all of this work, you know, if there are opportunities to, um, improve our ability to meet our priorities and initiatives, we should consider alignment with that as well, right? Like special education, like we wouldn't do anything here, I would hope, that would make it harder for us to meet the obligations and T A G order. Something, you know, like that's, that's how I would tackle that one, would sound?
Yeah.
Um, so the first word, does that say youth mental health?
Yeah.
Youth mental health.
Okay, okay. I think it's okay the way it's written. I'll move it.
Thank you.
Yeah, can I put a plus one next to one of the ones that talks about transportation?
Uh, you can, um.
That'd be the easiest.
Okay.
Yeah. Oh, in theory, that would be the easiest.
Yeah, so I was going to, you're going to rank them anyway, but.
Just throw out the word transportation. That might be, yeah. I know we talked about it a few times, but I think that's the only one that was like actually documented.
Okay.
I think this is, this is an explore. Um, explore our administrat- administrative structure. So this is something David talks about, it's like a, what would a flatter, more democratic structure look like? Where we retain our top leaders on campuses? And, you know, exploring how many layers of, of administration do we need? So just an explore, cause I don't know.
So, um, so maybe explore, um, this is kind of where the whole, like, you have to think about a blank slate. It has to be like, almost like a blank slate, like evaluation, right? Explore opportunities to restructure, um, to, you say restructure in an effort to, uh, flatten, I, I don't want to use, maybe connect closer, or maybe, I'm trying to think of the word, because I think each one of these. I mean, may, perhaps, I mean, I think that each one of these assumes the structure that we want to end up with does that.
So maybe like explore, explore structures that bring students the most resources and the, and retain the best educators and, and leaders close to students.
Okay. All right. I know trustee Kaufman had a couple, because he probably exceeded five. Oh. Oh, okay. I thought, I'm sorry. President Singh, you're.
Hey y'all, okay, so we're doing explore, is that right?
No, 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 we're, we're on the last one, the explore, we're going to pick, we, yeah, this is the, this is your fifth one, it's the last one.
Oh, this is the last one. Oh, okay, I thought my last one was the last one.
No, you have four.
Oh, okay. Um, I would say, well, hold on, I can't remember what was on my list.
Jacob has it.
Sorry. Jacob, what have I not said yet? Hold on, I can look, I can look at what I sent you.
Uh, have survey that forces our community to rank potential cuts.
Yes, um, yeah, that's probably a good one.
And then think twice, well, Kevin already said this one kind of, but think twice before cutting highly leveraged, highly effective programs.
Yeah, um, yeah, I definitely had a plus one on several that people already mentioned, but I guess one that hasn't been mentioned is, um, yeah, like if there's, this is again a process one, but if we can figure out a way to survey our community, so, um, they are forced to rank things or pick between things rather than just saying, don't do this, don't do that, don't do that. And that's going to be a lot more helpful, I think, to me personally, to know what the community, um, values more than other things, so.
Yeah, in the parameters of the guardrails that have been set.
And I think a lot of.
Like I have no idea, like I, for example, I have no, if you had to tell me right now, what do people value more? Would they rather have, um, a larger, like if, if those were two choices, I'm not saying these are, but if I was presented with, like I would want to know, did teacher, would teachers rather have smaller class sizes or more planning periods? Like, I don't know, you know, but we could find out probably, um, in some systematic way. So that's just one random example.
Yeah, no, I think that's a, a good one. Um, I think we need to create the process that allow, so, allows for people to engage in things that they are not closest to, but that they have some familiarity with. I, when I've done this in the past, I've seen instances where the things that they maybe aren't close to or don't know well are the ones that just, you know, like cut those things. And that can create an issue for us as you go through this process, because those things might be really, really important. Uh, but then you get surveys that come back and say, well, everybody wants this one thing. Uh, and it, so we just have to be really thoughtful about, about that. But I, I hear you and I do think that the surveys are going to be valuable.
I've got an explore.
Throw it up there, or let Jacob throw it up there, whatever you want to do.
So I've got explore opportunities for sharing costs with municipal and county government.
You can't go anymore. Oh yeah, you can, you can, sorry, I thought we were doing explores.
Good?
You can go, I forgot that, that we're on explore. We're now, we're about to be on explore.
So, I'm not sure how to word this exactly, but consider the benefits of an economically diverse school district. So just recognizing, I, I think this is the balancing act that we always have with trying to remain strongly focused on equitable services for kids and making sure that we're targeting communities where the investment is going to be most, um, you know, targeting the investment where the investment has historically been low. But also recognizing the importance of serving all of Austin. And so that we don't say, well, that we don't pit communities against each other, to say we have limited money, so we're only going to focus on X school or X neighborhood. We're only able to focus support on our DNF schools, but then we neglect the schools where there are families who may choose otherwise if we're not investing in those schools. And then we have a very different district that's going to be less overall in service of our community and less effective, I think. So the point of that is just being careful not to, I mean, just being, you know, considering all communities and how do we keep, um, AIS as a diverse community as we're making cuts that could cause some families to move out and make other choices.
So consider benefits of economically diverse school district open for in, recognize serving all of Austin, all under, under.
Right, yes, and I, I think it's just a consideration, so, and it, it's the balancing act that we always do when we're focusing. We had to do that with the bond, which was in passing a bond that is investing historical amounts in communities that have not been invested in. That doesn't mean nobody, that other communities are not getting something out of the bond, because the bond was benefiting all kids in a lot of different ways. So as we make the tough choices, we're going to have to make some tough choices to say, this community is going to, you know, will suffer more if we cut this than this community will. So be it, we're going to have to do that, but not to be flippant about it, not to be, not to ignore the fact that this community is also extremely valuable to our school district and that we need to, um, you know, not just, forget about them.
Yeah, well said. So were you the last one, trustee Kaufman, or was trustee Hunter? She started, right?
Yes, she started, she had the limit impact on finance.
All right. Y'all, it's 10:27. Uh, and so what we would do at this point is, uh, take your little scorecards, Jacob's going to describe what that looks like. Um, we can do it two ways. You can, yeah, and, and just, so you know, it's not one, two, three, four, five, right? It, there is, there is by, by design, larger gaps in your one, two, three, four and five, yes. You actually should have four, you have 15, you have a.
Two, five, 10, 15.
Two, five, 10, 15. And so, um, what we would typically do is go around and you would tell me, well, the first thing we would do is we would consolidate these, right? And there's a couple that are, we could probably consolidate, but for the most part, they're pretty individualized, like we don't have a ton of collapsing to do. But what we need to do is to have each of you assign one postcard to one item. It's going to be hard, like it's going to be really, really hard. And, and they're not weighted the same, right? And I think that's, that's, for that purpose, it should be hard. And so we would ask you to either, and with, and vice president Foster, how you want to do this? We can typically like have trustee Gonzalez just tell us and then we can go write the numbers and then add it up. Or we can have y'all get up and go place. We can do it both ways, you tell me. Whatever you'd like to do, but at the end of the day, what we're going to do is we're going to count those, those numbers up, right? And we're going to just, just see what it says. I'm not saying that none of, that all of these aren't fantastic, you're not going to be incorporated, but at least the administration will be able to see, as a board, you know, there tends to be consensus around these being the highest of considerations for guardrails. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm. And the, the high value is on the high number.
Correct. Correct. And they're not all equally weighted, because that fifteen should be really hard for you. It should be the thing that you would protect almost above anything else, or you'd want to be considered above everything else. So, it's going to be hard.
So, um, I like the idea of we go around with our boom, 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 like, with the rounds. Do you want explanations with it, or do you just want people to name them?
Yeah, I think.
Okay, and then, I would say, before that, you should give us a couple minutes to, I can't read that stuff from here. So, I mean, from an eyesight standpoint. Yeah, yeah. But give it, give us a, give us a set amount of time to just look.
Okay.
And then we come, and when we all sit down, we should know where our things are going.
I have an amendment to your suggestion. What is the benefit over reading it than telling them, other than just doing a gallery walk and placing it?
Well, so, we can do both ways, I've seen, I've done it both ways.
Because we're not, we're not going to do explanations, right? We're just going to say fifteen on that number. Here's the thing, they're not numbered. But now I have to tell you, that one, the third one, the fourth, the third one, the fourth.
Well, you should know, though.
You want to come put a place that we can place you, you're in a field. Place them yourself.
I'm just telling you, man, I've seen this go wrong.
All right.
Yeah, let's do that. And then we'll add them up. And on the really, really small ones, put on the side.
But I'm like, the transportation one, which one? The fourth one, the third one?
Can someone send me a photo of the options, please?
I'll send it.
Thank you.
All right, it's 10:40, so as staff is tabulating on our guardrail side, we're going to go through two quick rounds, or actually, however many quick rounds on explore, starting with trustee Boswell.
Okay, I will read my explorers, and we're not writing them down, we're just handing them over, I understand, so I'll read them quickly. Rethink the cost of elementary school planning time and how it is offered. Build office space on the central office lot that can be used for our partners, perhaps as a trade for services in part. I know I talked to one of our community partners who said they paid $55,000 a year for their office space, and it includes a conference room, it includes a copier. Could we build office space here that our partners could use? And, and a lot of that could be shared, it could be cheaper, and we have a giant enormous lot that we could build a parking garage and space on, if it's allowed. Investigate whether apprentice teachers at elementary schools could provide planning time either less expensively or with a better academic return than what we're. Investigate whether apprentice teachers, you know, kind of teachers in training, at elementary schools, so it, working as maybe a classroom aide, an instructional aide in the classroom, and gaining experience, kind of grow your own experience at elementary schools, could provide planning time either less expensively or with a better academic return than what we're currently doing. Reduce screen time and cost of software. Create an ambitious corporate philanthropy effort, a moonshot. Build income generating assets, the region, I forget which region El Paso is, the, their ESCE region. At 14, maybe, has a big event center that they built, and they rent it out, and they make money for their region based on that. There's a school district that has an event center near Dallas. What is it? Do we build a hotel on one of our buildings? What do we do? Something that actually is a money-making venture. What's that? Okay, hotels illegal, okay, I know alcohol's illegal, except unless you're near Texas Stadium and you're that one district. Okay, but yeah, things, things we can think of. Consider potential savings of a hub-and-spoke CTE center model, maybe even with a bond to build CTE centers. Explore opportunities for sharing costs with neighboring districts in addition. I don't know what there could be. Find out which of our students left and why. I, I think we talk about enrollment, but we don't know who left and why, and really do a deep dive into figuring that out, so we have a sense of how to get people back.
Thanks for that, and thanks for modeling that. So, we're going through, and just give us your list, and they'll be kind of typed out by staff. Anyone else have a sort of crisp list ready?
I'll go next.
Trustee Zapata.
Evaluate existing partners, partnerships, i.e. the joint committee. To connect with our student, student outcomes. Evaluate. Evaluate. Oh, gosh, okay. Oh. All after-school programs. To align with CIPs. And district. Student outcomes. Okay. Okay. What is that? Oh. Oh. Investigate, no, the lottery, who was created to give us a lot of education money. Can we get an increase, you know, investigate to get a lottery increase for education. That's it.
Thank you, trustee Zapata. We can either go, keep down the, straight down the line? All right, trustee Lugo.
So, piggybacking on to a couple that Lynn said, one of them around shared resources, so potentially shared IT resource neighboring districts. Just exploring what that could look like, and if there's any potential savings there. And I don't know if this has been done, but like, or if it makes sense necessarily, but exploring how, like, to, to what extent can litigation costs be mitigated, like, prevented? And otherwise managed down.
Yeah, so just, yeah, quickly, in addition to my other explorations, yeah, exploring how to increase enrollment and stuff. Is it the, making the enrollment process easier, so with the system, and even investing in staff to increase enrollment, that could more than pay for itself. And. And I, I would say furthermore, looking at the, you know, other, the entire community supporting things that AISD does, such as other government entities. We have a lot of great programs that people really believe in and value in our community, and I don't think that they know that most of the funding for some of those comes mostly from Austin ISD's budget. So, I'll go to, you know, big banquets that maybe all the fundraising they do pay 10%, and we are keeping these really, really good organizations afloat that are really valuable to the community, so even just letting people know what a tight spot we're in and how important it is well in advance of when we're having to make cuts, so that they can explore supporting us with, with those things.
Did you, is that last one written on your card also?
This written on my card? No.
No, it's, it's fine, I just want to make sure I, I don't want to have to go back and listen.
I'll write it on my card.
Don't I collect the cards that I can, and then we'll pick up the differences in the audio? I don't know if president Singh's on, but we can go to trustee Gonzalez unless she hops on. I think she's working with the team.
I'm here, I'm here. Hey, guys. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I migrated to a different room. They keep moving me around. Okay, so I would say for explore. Are we, are we doing the plus one?
So, trustee Singh, it's a little bit hard to hear you, so let's try one more time, and if it doesn't work out.
Oh, okay.
You can communicate the list in writing.
Okay, so I just wanted to ask, can you hear me now? I turned off my video.
Yes, we are.
Okay, all right, so I would say, second, the hub-and-spoke model, second, the use of HQ, like, or sort of examining HQ and also telecommuting. I think one thing that maybe hasn't been mentioned yet is, it's related to enrollment, which has, but I'm thinking about, like, leveraging, the one, one thing that we have a lot of in AISD is people, and so, like, why don't we think about ways to get everybody be like, kind of like a VDR, but basically for enrollment, like, let's have a training program in place, and so, anybody who wanted to could get the enrollment process started in a streamlined way. And that way, we just have our numbers out there, it won't work for any group, we just know how to get people started on an enrollment process and get that thing going, without having hopefully too much expense and possibly a high return on that investment. Oh, I'm sorry, and one more thing, is consider vertical alignment and how that. Having better aligned vertical teams could create more inclusive cohorts of students and keep our enrollment high.
I agree with the points that trustee Boswell made about central office, I would just expand that to include our other larger facilities, properties, like Nelson Field, or the Delco Center, or the Burger Center, where I learned how to drive, like, I think there are a lot more useful things that can happen in that parking lot, other than me practicing driving as a 16-year-old. And I also, you know, I just thought about this as other people were talking. I think one thing that maybe hasn't been mentioned yet is, it's related to enrollment, which has, but I'm thinking about like leveraging, the one thing that we have a lot of in AISD is people, and so like, why don't we think about ways to get everybody be like, kind of like a VDR, but basically for enrollment, like, let's have a training program in place, and so anybody who wanted to could get the enrollment process started in a streamlined way. And that way, we just have our numbers out there, we're any group, we just know how to get people started on an enrollment process and get that thing going without having, hopefully, too much expense and possibly a high return on that investment. Oh, I'm sorry, and one more thing, is consider vertical alignment and how that, having better aligned vertical teams could create more inclusive cohorts of students and keep our enrollment high.
I agree with the points that trustee Boswell made about central office. I would just expand that to include our other larger facilities properties, like Nelson Field or the Delco Center or the Burger Center where I learned how to drive. Like, I think there are a lot more useful things that can happen in that parking lot, other than me practicing driving as a sixteen-year-old. And I also, you know, I just thought about this as other people were talking. I zero-scaped part of my yard this past summer, and I think that would save on maintenance, you know, and be a lot more friendly in terms of the use of resources, if we were to look into that in our campuses. Because I also, you know, got complaints this summer about the overgrowth on campuses. And if that shift were to happen, that would initially cost a significant amount of resources, but I think in the long term, it would save a lot of money. So that's it.
For their program to, when you take your lawn out, that's a great question.
I don't have it on my list, but I love the zero-scaping idea, especially as something someone else could pay for, because it addresses other city and state and, well, maybe not state, the city and national priorities, so, love it. I had put AISD offices on the menu, and then I have embrace and nurture our partner relationships. So make sure that we're not frightening away partners who bring a lot of resources to us.
Already gave mine, but I want a plus one, trustee Singh's VDRs. I was somewhere this week, and I said something, and one of the sorority sisters, she was like, it's not too late. You can pledge now. You can become a sorority sister now. I mean, she whipped out a book and like, started like, enrolling me. I was like, wait. But yeah, if we could do that, I think like, everybody should be able to, I don't know how you would do, but be able to like, have that system. Here's something, I've been talking, I talked to Matthias about this before. I want a bus. I think a bus would be great, right? And this bus would go all over the city. It'd be like a call center slash get your help, get whatever, but you didn't have to drive the way the heck over here. So Monday, we're going to be in Capitol Plaza. Tuesday, we're going to be down at Great Hills Trail. Wednesday, we're going to be over at, what's the, South Park Meadows, right? We come to you, because sometimes going to the school, you don't always get what you need, and it sometimes breaks that relationship, because they're like, I don't know, stop coming up here, right? So I don't know, I thought that'd be a good idea. Just a mobile AISD, central office. Like, not where you would be.
But we do have these places like, called schools in the community, where people expect to be able to enroll.
Yeah, that's true, but they only do it on Tuesdays from one to one fifteen, no, I'm just playing.
Trustee Hunter's getting me in trouble. That's not true, by the way. Take exception to that comment?
I have to enroll a kid, too, trust me. Check your email, by the way.
So just as reinforcement for several ideas, we're already sort of leaning into pre-K, but identifying and valuing pre-K as an entry point for having sort of, what do you call it, cradle-to-completion kids in the district. So really, thinking of that as a potential revenue source in terms of the enrollment, in addition to those who pay. The trustee Gonzalez's partnership with city, the mission creep of public education in this country has been that in order to serve kids well academically, we've had to take on more and more Health and Human Services, and beginning to leverage that and almost, I don't want to say demand it, but looking to the city to say, look, kids being healthier, kids being safer, all those things that we are doing, it's your turn. You're in a different position than us, it's your turn to be footing the bill for some of this work. So looking for partnerships with the city in that way, especially on the Health and Human Services side. Related to that, this is weird to say this sort of publicly, but leveraging the passions and interests of the various council members, where they have a specific interest in something that we also share that value, and that council member or the mayor or the county commissioner, whoever, might be willing to put on a cape for that issue to be pushed forward in partnership. So if there are areas where, I don't know if it's zero-scaping, I don't know if it's something with the environment or something with, you know, partnerships that build out the facilities around, you know, our playgrounds, our parks, the things that we own, being really proactive to look for opportunities for the city to help us, help them. And then the last sort of cosign is exploring the wide range of ways that existing buildings and existing land can be leveraged. So I really got excited about like, whenever I think of, I can't remember the group that did the build-out of ACC Highland.
That was Red Leaf.
Red Leaf, I was about to say Romaine, like, so. Ridicchio, Red Leaf, Romaine, some salad. But, okay, but it had to have an R, but, but the way, I mean, and they did, they were wonderful, they were wonderful. So the way ACC Highland was transformed and built out and reimagined, and here is this huge parking lot. And we have lots of huge parking lots. There's a wide range of ways that our buildings and our land could be leveraged, and I think we're in a moment where there will be an appetite for leaning into that, that might not have been there two years ago. So I guess those are my four cosigns, and I have them written down. And I think we went through everybody.
Yeah, that was great. So if you happen to write those down, we'll collect them, I very much appreciate that. And so I know we're about to close out, so I don't know, trustee, I mean, sorry, Vice President Foster. We wrote, the team went ahead and counted up the ones that were highest. And so I don't know, I think it'd be really cool if you kind of closed it out by just taking us through the ones that have been circled number-wise, and just kind of share that with the community and share it with our trustees, and then we can kind of call it a night. Again, we'll type this up, put the numbers against it, all of this will inform the process, but it'd be helpful to kind of see, you know, as a body, as a board, kind of where those focus areas are. Would that be cool, or you want me to do it?
That would be awesome. Oh, good, you'll do it?
I'll do it if you want me to, but I was offering if you would want to do it.
You got this, Sue.
All right. So so we, the team went through, every trustee has put their numbers on, and just so our community knows, each trustee received four numbers. There was a fifteen, there was a ten, there was a five, and there was a two. And the task was to go and place the card with the number, fifteen being the highest priority, along the consideration or guardrail or, you know, idea that they believe that it should be kind of tied to, right? So the higher the number, once you add them all up, by consensus, you would say as an administration, hey, this is where we know the board is kind of focused, or something they really, really want us to consider, and the community to consider, and really needs to be supported and protected throughout the entire process. Now, all of these have a place, that's important to say, like, all of these. But we know, because we're going through a difficult process, that's going to include very difficult things being discussed against very difficult things, right? And the least of bad ideas, and so this really helps. It can be difficult, because it's hard to place that fifteen, right, that really like, high-value number. But we did run it out, and so I'm going to go in reverse order. I'm going to go from the lowest of the five that we're accounted for, and there's twenty, twenty-four. Twenty-four, it was added up and summed, and there's nothing else actually close to twenty-four, which is kind of cool. You have a twenty here, but that's about. No, but we're going from bottom to up. So I'm saying like, from the bottom up, like, there's like some separation there. So twenty-four, listen to the people impacted before cuts are final, right? So I think process-wise, we can definitely make sure that's incorporated, and we can kind of, when we come back to you, show how that makes its way to the process. Twenty-four, and then there's a twenty-five over here, right? I don't see anything else, twenty-five. Literacy be inclusive, align the student outcomes. And so, you know, what we talked about was, this is going to be kind of, you can almost expand this a little bit, to the key initiatives that this district has. Whatever we do cut-wise, we have to ensure that we're not adversely impacting student outcomes. Right, so literacy, literacy, but we are specific here on literacy at that point. As you move up, you have twenty-seven, which is way over here. So evidence that teacher voice has been heard in the decision-making process, or in the decision, right? I think that's pretty, pretty clear. But it's really, really, I think, just great to make sure that that's highlighted and you can incorporate that into the process. Then you go to twenty-seven, and then we go to thirty-five, so a pretty big jump here. Consider long-term impact of cuts and reductions. We've experienced this, the last, maybe three years ago, we made some cuts, and we're kind of paying for them now, right? Maybe not in a cost perspective, but in a risk perspective. And we can talk about specification, you can talk about some other initiatives, but long-term impact. We always think in terms of fiscal year, oh, we're going to make this cut, we're going to reduce our next year's budget by five million dollars, but we don't realize that that's going to cost us over the next eight years or ten years. Or we're going to introduce this risk into the system, so I think that's great. And then the highest, which I'm very, really proud to be able to even say this, given what our board did, forty-five, ensure cuts in any area are equity-driven. And so I think it really aligns with the values of this organization, I think the work that we did with the LRP, the work we're about to do with committee. This being highest at forty-five, again, ensure cuts in any area are equity-driven. Three sets of bits in there. So what we'll do as an administration is we'll get all this stuff, we'll type it up. We will, again, no, you can't tell which trustee voted for what, that's kind of the point. We'll provide it back to the trustees, and then we'll upload it to Board Docs, along with the typed-out areas of focus. As best I can read y'all's handwriting, or our team can read your handwriting.
You know where to find us.
I know where to find you. So I hope this exercise was useful for you all. It is incredibly useful for us. Just even the dialogue, making sure that we're really understanding, when you say something, how you mean it. I very much appreciate it. I know we'll go back to this and kind of tease out things in the video. But thank you for working with us on this. I definitely think it will help inform and improve the process, as difficult as the process is going to be. Anything else, Jacob or Katrina, that you want to share or add? Oh, absolutely. Trustees, yes? Thank you so much. Brandy's over there, hanging out, backup support. I don't even know where some of these boards came from, so I have to replace them somewhere tonight. I know where one came from, but we'll figure that out. All right, that's all I've got, Vice President Foster.
So I want to absolutely thank the staff for a really well-conceived and well-executed set of activities for us that I think helped us get our thoughts onto the table in a way that hopefully works well for you. And same with you, Superintendent Segura, in terms of shepherding us along, and Jacob, everybody, everybody. Monday, five-thirty, we have a special board meeting, so the public should be aware. Trustee Whitley Chu is especially excited to be here. And, and I, yes, I should say, we're all excited to be here Monday. And it's actually a very important moment, because that is a voting meeting where we will be taking action with regards to our tax rate and the possibility of a voter approval tax rate election. That's Monday, August nineteenth at five-thirty. And I want to, of course, thank the trustees. This is a collegial board, this is a thoughtful board, we have differences of opinion and perspective, but over and over and over again, I think what we try to role model for the community is coming together towards consensus. And the mood was as light as it can be tonight, given the seriousness of our circumstances. We're putting on a strong face, but this is tough stuff coming. And I don't think any of us, at the end of the day, are going to be thrilled. We might be thrilled that we did the absolute best we could do and that we were thoughtful, but that does not mean that pain is not coming, in terms of our fiscal responsibility and the implications of us acting responsibly in the, in the, in the face of a abusive relationship with the state, to be, to be frank. And thank you for giving me a moment, or for allowing me to take a moment to express my gratitude to all the folks here and to our community. We are now at a moment where we can go home at a, for us, relatively early hour. It is eleven oh six. Secretary Boswell, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Having a motion by Secretary Boswell and a second by trustee Zapata to adjourn. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. The motion passes unanimously by all those on the floor. This meeting is adjourned at eleven oh six PM. Thank you all for your attendance and for watching.